Order, special board meeting, May seventeen, twenty twenty-four of the West Valley School Board. Where citizens may comment and items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during the agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment and items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of meeting. Citizens after identifying themselves will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are in effect at all times. Chairperson may interrupt, determine an individual's statement or appropriate, including when statements are out of order, too lengthy, breach personal privacy rights, are abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum. We'll stand for the forty-eight.
My pledge of allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
The correspondence, yes, public participation. So we'll go on to the first action item, a policy review, Richard, would you?
Yeah, so when you looked at policy three one four one, and we decided at the last meeting to table it to this meeting because there was a date listed as June fifteen in the policy that should have been May thirty-first. So we got that issue corrected and ready to go.
So we're all familiar with thirty-one, forty-one from the meeting, earlier meeting. All right, we have an entertaining motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to review and approve the thirty-one forty-one language out of district enrollment.
A second.
Is there any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous. Okay, so now the second action item, recount of the technology fund of the election ballots.
All right, first, first step in this process is for everyone to sign an oath as a judge. Like everyone put the name in the first blank that's here. And you're gonna sign the next blank. You're going to fill out the page at the bottom, then I will sign after the red after we finish the, so everyone take just. Go ahead and stand up. We're gonna raise your hand. And read the oath there, what's your name in the blank? Very good, now everyone go ahead and sign your name on that next line. It's all the dates, it's the seventeenth of May. All right. Here, so in this box right here, we've got the ballots from the tech fund levy that were counted prior to this meeting by the three judges that we had for this process. As you know, the preliminary results were nine hundred and sixty to nine hundred and sixty. So since it resulted in a tie, a recount by the board is mandated per MCA. With this in mind, I'm gonna go ahead and break this, so this has been sealed, it's got my initials over it. Anybody's touched this since the last. Counted everything, I'm gonna open this thing up and turn this over to you guys. Let me show you what's going on, so here, in here you can see all of the ballots grouped into Jane, as we talked about, Jane was one of the judges. There are roughly fifty, you go through, most of them are gonna be fifty, some of them are forty-nine, some of them are fifty-one. If in the event that a ballot might have been declared spoiled, or there might be another one due to accounting issues. So at this point, you as judges can decide how you want to organize the counts. You can go ahead and take these as we've talked about and put them in the piles of for levy and against the levy if you'd like. But yeah, once we get, once you get going, here are the tally sheets, so each one of you have, when you have a tally sheet. You'll get counting these things. There's a, we're gonna have three judges represented here, so if, that's why I suggested we have three people taking the tallies. If you're gonna break into groups of two, you should have another person be there to witness, that's where it gets a little tricky. I would recommend having three people doing the tally, in a sense, or involved in the count, that's one way we go. The judges did it before as one person, right, and two took the talents on us. Then after that, once you're satisfied what's going on, I'll set up another table over here, and you're gonna put associate this tally sheet, your tally sheets, if there are three of you doing it. The tally sheets need to match, and then just we'll put these, clip these with the bundle of votes that you count. Once we're done with that, then we've got the final return form that gets updated, and then from this I'll publish the results, the official, the end of being official results, okay? Any questions?
We'll start in.
So do you three wanna go in the Jane step line?
And I, I don't think I should.
We can have two people here reading the vote, the votes, and then three people telling.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so like, we're just be looking over the shoulder the other one, make sure that's called out right.
Okay.
Do you wanna do that and make sure the count's correct?
Are we in a separate version?
We have pencils.
We could separate them. We don't have to touch them multiple times.
That makes sense. Your pencils work right here for you, let me know anything else that you guys need.
Okay, so you guys will need the tally sheet, and then I guess pencils, yes.
Thank you.
And then we'll just count them as we go, Jeff, and read them to them.
And we wanna move that box back just a tiny bit so that the elderly see everybody.
Are you thinking you're gonna, you're gonna read to a certain amount on the tally sheets? I'm not gonna have enough room to put all of the.
Okay, so.
Again, I'd recommend going to a hundred or two hundred, it's whatever you guys.
We'll see, if you guys need to stop at a hundred on your tally sheet, that may be.
Might make it easier too, just for dividing the count, just to keep it at a hundred.
Okay.
That way we actually go back through, it's just a hundred votes to examine maybe.
So do you guys think, you think it'd be easy just to like read as we're counting these, like four?
That's what normally one person calls it.
I almost wonder, like, Jeff should be looking over Steph's shoulder, if she's calling him to make sure that you agree with what she calls.
Okay, so four, 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 is, is pace okay? Do you need to go faster, slower?
That's good.
Four, 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 four. Against. You need to have to recount before anything, or you know, recount before you live.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea if you guys keep the total, their totals need to match.
Yeah, prepare your totals at this point before you go to the.
Just, I have thirty-four, four.
You have thirty-four.
I have thirty-five.
Four?
Four.
I got thirty-four.
You need to go back through.
Okay, let's just have my four.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty. Seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five.
And one again.
One again.
And then the one, this is the one again. You guys got that, we gotta keep on?
Yeah.
Okay, now, against, 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 and against. And how many guys have on those?
Sixteen.
Okay, I counted sixteen of those, if you wanted to double check.
I have sixteen.
Sixteen. Okay.
Or if you wanna put those just on the chair next to you, maybe just so they don't get.
And then once you guys decide you're done with your tally sheets, everything that Jeff has on the side, we'll set on the table over here.
Okay, no, good.
Okay.
All right, four. That's just the same four, okay, don't do anyone, so that makes it thirty-five, yep, yeah, okay, four, 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 four. Hey, we're gonna switch to against, do you wanna count those?
Sure, seventeen. Seventeen.
Four, what?
Seventeen, seventeen additional, four.
There's no reason you have to keep all of those, you could put them separately, I'd like the law.
Okay.
That'll make it easier for you.
So it should be fifty-one total?
Yep.
Fifty-one. Fifty, okay, and sixteen total against.
Yeah.
And we're gonna start again, so maybe you wanna drop down on a different line to keep track of the stuff or something? All right, so against, 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 again, against, 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 against.
It's thirty-three. Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Do you wanna keep those separate now?
I think we keep four, I mean, definitely separate. How we, how you guys say? That should be a hundred on that tally invoice, so you go to another sheet.
Yeah, yeah, so. Do you guys wanna go a new sheet then? And I think Mark wants to pull these with your sheet, okay, they're gonna go to a new sheet.
Yeah, so then we're gonna separate those, so everyone look at your tally sheets, if you're done with those.
So these.
Put your name, you gotta write your name, and your signature, and then you guys need to get together and sign off on each other's.
You gotta write those totals in there.
Okay, number votes cast here was
a hundred on that sheet, definitely, right?
Yeah, she's trying to do four and a half.
Also, zero. Fifty-one.
What are you gonna say?
Yeah.
In pen probably, I think.
Well, yeah, it's supposed to be.
Oh.
Do you want me to get you guys in pens?
I need pot of coffee.
Remember to write your name, you print your name as well.
I think that's why doing two hundred seemed like such a good idea, because we didn't have to do that.
We have room for two hundred.
We have to print our name next to our signature when we're, even when we're verifying.
Get his money on that sheet as we.
Yeah. Yeah, tally small.
And let's definitely try to hit two hundred. Or three hundred, if you're asking to make the three. Half a lot of tally.
I was just gonna do them all, and I see how that wouldn't work. Very good, awesome, so we got three of these things that manually associated with the bundle, and then I'll go grab a calculator.
Okay, you guys ready again? All right, four, 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 four. Four. And now we're gonna switch to against, so you guys might wanna.
I have twenty-four. Four, twenty-four, four, yeah.
Report.
That's right.
Everybody got them, okay, against, 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 and against.
Seven.
I have twenty-seven.
That's a group of fifty-one.
You guys gonna start again?
So we, we're gonna try to fit two hundred on here.
That'd be great.
So we got a total of fifty-one, right?
Okay, so maybe do a new line for this new batch. Four, 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 four. All right, we're gonna switch now to against.
That's twenty-three, right? No, thirty-three.
Whoa, I'm.
I got nineteen.
That's what I got, sorry.
I've just separated my thing into quadrants so that I can keep each count separate.
I got eighteen.
I got nineteen.
Start over.
Jeff verified it.
Terrified it.
Yeah.
Should be written. Because if his count is off, you've got, you gotta go back through it again, if you don't agree.
I think.
Thank you.
And now we're gonna be switching to the against ones, let's say. Against, 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 against. Against, 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 against.
Thirty-one, thirty-one.
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 All right, new line, new bundle, for, four. You got one for, right? Got one for, one for, right, four, four.
Now is it two then?
Three.
Three, okay.
Four, 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 four. Now we're gonna switch to against.
Twenty.
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 A new line for against. One against. Against, 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 against.
Thirty.
Thirty, thirty.
Hey, you guys good for another bundle on your sheet? Four, 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 four.
Thirty-six. Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Okay, so now we're gonna switch to against, so.
We decided that was a teacher, teacher.
Yeah, right.
Hey, we ready?
Ready.
Against, 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 against.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Can you guys put more on there?
I've counted it quite tidy. I've counted quite tidy as it is. Okay, so now.
And on these, um, actually, when you print your name, you see where the election judge.
Should do that.
Yeah, you got it right, Master.
Yeah, yes, signature, and then signature name. No, I know, but then when we sign on others, other people, we were right, our name, our signature and our name in print.
You guys all match, right, number-wise?
Yep.
We should.
We all match just.
You gotta put a total number there.
Sixty.
Ninety-nine, four.
Is that what you have, Mark?
I have ninety-nine, four.
Okay.
Ninety-nine, four, yep.
And one oh two against.
One oh two against.
That's what I have.
You have one oh two.
Yeah.
The two, that had two hundred and one.
Makes sense, you guys have them broke kind of half and half, so then the tally. On the sheet, makes sense.
They had to do a great job on it.
It seems like it would be easier than this.
It really does. It's shocking.
When I was giving instructions, I, you look on there, it's amazing.
And I have to tell myself, I don't say the word until I actually touch the table.
That was where we got caught up, the first, the first couple of times we did it. Yeah, it's, and, and we weren't separating them into different piles, so we had to go with all of them. Yeah, it's when you say it.
Yeah, so I don't say it until I touch the table, I had to do like, after my first round, I'm like, wait, but I'll say it, did I not?
I know.
So. Okay, we ready?
Yes.
Ready.
Four, 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 four. And then we're gonna switch, so it's.
Thirty.
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 Thirty. Alright, switching to against. One against, 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 against.
Twenty.
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 Alright, ready for a new bundle?
Yes.
Four, 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 four. I'm gonna switch now.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Ready?
Yes.
Against, 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 against.
Twenty-five.
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 Ready for another bundle? Four, 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 four.
Seventeen.
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 Okay, we're gonna switch to against. One, against, against. Are we at three?
Yes.
Okay, are we at three?
So we're at four now.
Four, okay. So this would be four, that was four.
Four.
That was four.
Yes.
Gotcha, okay. Against, 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 against.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Can we do another bundle? Ready? Four, 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 four.
Twenty-eight.
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 Alright, against now, one against, 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 against.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Can we do another one? I have one hundred versus one hundred.
We do.
Yeah. Yeah, when I graduate.
When I graduate? I'm old, I'm showing it, it feels like it, Jeff, I'll say like.
That's when it's started.
Older than the Constitution.
It used to be, it was called King's College, it's interesting, when Rutgers was set up as Queen's College, so the Brits were on the East Coast. It's harder than, I mean, the attention to detail, because you realize, that's why I recommend, you really should have three people, right?
Yeah.
Well, this is a good setup. I would quite appreciate it.
Literally, I might go until ten, ten thirty-nine, it'd be hilarious.
Trying to get it right.
Oh, no. Feeling like Chinese water torture.
Yes.
Yes. Four, 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 four.
Thirty-three. Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Against. Yeah, one against.
One again.
Against, 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 against.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. You guys ready for a new stack? Four, 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 four.
We're at six.
Four, 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 four.
Twenty-five.
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 Ready? Against, 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 against.
Twenty-five.
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 We walk the plank after this.
Are you guys ready for your next bundle?
Yes.
Four, 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 four.
Thirty-one.
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 That song added an extra level of distraction to me. I was like, oh, tell me what kind of student I would be.
I tuned it out well. Okay, we ready? Against, 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 against.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
You guys can, can you do another funnel on there?
Just one second, I put my against in my fours, so just let me transfer that down here, because I have the same numbers. As everybody else. As everybody else. I'm blaming on Gilligan. There we go.
Alright, are we ready? Or. 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 Or.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Alright, you guys ready? Against. 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 Against.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Another bundle?
No.
No.
You're a little over a quarter, the quarter, quarter of the way through.
Do you need a drink? Okay.
So the product count is five oh one. Little third actually, it's one-ten and ninety.
One-ten and ninety.
One-ten four. Ninety against.
I just realized with horror, we have more songs yet to come.
Hey, we ready?
Yes.
Or. 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 Or.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
Against. One. So far, you guys good? Yeah. Against. That's one, that's two. Two against, okay. Against. 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 Against.
Twenty-one.
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 Twenty-one. Hey, we ready? New bundle? Or. 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 Or.
Seventeen, seventeen.
Seventeen. Alright, you guys ready? Against. 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 Against.
Thirty-three.
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 Thirty-three. New bundle? Or. 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 Or.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Ready? Against. 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 Yes. Against. 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 Yes.
Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine.
Ready? New bundle? Or. 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 Or.
Forty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Alright, ready? Against. 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 Yeah, true.
Three.
Against. 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 Against.
Six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Can you guys do another bundle?
You're gonna keep trying every time.
I'm rooting for you.
Can you get rid of a little smaller?
You get in your groove, you want to just keep going.
Oh, you do, don't you?
Yeah.
And then you kind of get, kind of gets.
Yeah.
Do me a favor on the rejected ballots, the third box, just slash through it so it doesn't look like you forgot something, and then put a zero if there's nothing that's rejected, okay?
And then you say the word against so much, you're like, it may have been.
Down on the top, probably.
I.
Yeah. Even saying this, right? Maybe we should change against to no.
I have ninety-two versus one oh nine.
Should I go? Ninety-two, four, one oh nine against.
Those weren't the teachers.
Halfway. Get nine hundred or something, yeah.
Regretting sipping on my water at this point.
You can totally take a break, we've been having an hour fifty minutes here, so. No breaks, no breaks. Tough on vacations. Not stopping this car. Bit three hundred on.
Sign of weakness, sign of weakness.
Meredith family packs depends on their road trips.
With same life, you know, stopping.
Yeah.
Good, perfect, perfect, okay. Please, this goes rapid, it's right. You want to take a break? Let's see the rush.
I'm good, whatever you guys want, keep going. You guys ready? Or. 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 Or.
Forty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. You ready? Against. 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 Against.
Seven, twenty-seven.
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 Are you ready for the next one? Or. One sec, I'd put my stuff in my own area again. Okay, you ready? Yep, so we have one for. Or. 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 Or.
Six.
Twenty-six.
Six.
Twenty-six. You guys ready for the next, go? Against. 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 Against.
Twenty-four.
Four.
Twenty-four.
Policy of website.
New bundle, ready? It's four. Or. 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 Or.
Thirty-four, thirty-four.
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 Alright, you guys ready? Against. 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 Against, 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 against. 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 Against, 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 against.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Sixteen.
Sixteen. New bundle? Or, or. Or. Or, 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 or. Or, or. Or, or. Or, or. Or. Or, or. Or, or.
Eighteen.
Ready? Against, 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 against. Against, 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 against. Against, against. Against, against. Against, against. Against, against. Against. Against, 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 against. Against, 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 against. 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 Against, yes.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. I mean, this is just a little one.
Why don't you keep the little one for the end?
Okay.
It's in your numbers, not the.
What you do to your children?
He's a liver.
Are you guys out of room?
Yeah. We did get up under two hundred and stretch.
At one oh one to ninety-nine.
One oh one, four, ninety-nine against.
Correct, yes, one oh one, four, ninety-nine against.
Zero rejects.
You ready? Or. 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 Or, or. Or, or. Or, or. Or. Or, or. Or, or. Or, or, or. Or, 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 or.
Twenty-one.
You guys ready? Against, 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 against. Against. Against, against. Against, 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 against. Against, against. Against. Against, 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 against. Against, against, against. 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 Against, against.
Twenty-eight.
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 Ready? New bundle? Or, or, or. Or. Or, or, or. Or, or. Or, 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 or. Or, or. Or, or. Or, or.
Nineteen.
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 Ready? Against, 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 against. Yes. Against, against. Against, 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 against. Against, 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 against. Against, against, yes.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Are you ready? New bundle? Four, or. Or, or, or. Or, or, or. Or, or. Or, 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 or. Or, or, or. Or, or, or. Or, or. Or, or. Or, or.
Seven.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Alright, you ready? Against, 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 against. Against, 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 against. Against, 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 against. Against, against. Against. Against, against, against.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
New bundle? Or, or. Or, 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 or. Or, or. Or, or, or. Or, 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 or.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Ready? Against. Against, 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 against. Against, against. Against, 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 against. Against, against. Against, against, against. Against, against, against. Against, 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 against.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six, that shirt one?
Okay. Max again?
Yeah, maxed again. That one's not held out.
Ninety, ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
What's that?
One oh one, I got one oh one.
One oh one, yeah. Ninety-four, one oh eight, yes.
Ninety-four.
Or, I won away against.
Nine, zero.
In the count. Four.
Do you guys need a break?
Yes.
So, Mark, on this one, that isn't allowed that we're gonna do as spoiled, do we just, is that go in that separate box then, it looks like?
Yes.
Okay, so we just keep this in with this count then?
Yeah, whatever count you put, you just have that in and you'll say, yep.
There's one that.
How do we, if you don't look at it, it's empty.
Yeah, it's empty, there's nothing checked.
Yeah, so that'll be counted as a rejected ballot.
Yes.
In the next count.
Yes.
Yes, that's the other one.
Around the facilities. Is there coffee anywhere in this building?
Nobody has like a Keurig.
Oh.
There is a Keurig machine, your son, he shows up by any cheat. We need to pause. Switching sides on you now, it's like, where is this guy coming from? Alright, five minute break? Sure, nine minutes. Fire, Steph is a break, sign of weakness. Guys doing great.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you're appreciated.
Oh, Mark, should we shut this off?
No, I would leave it running.
Okay, okay.
Any vision of improprieties, like, let's leave it running.
Is there, where's that Keurig machine at?
It's in the lounge.
Okay, I'm gonna go first.
How've you been doing?
Good, how's it going with you?
Great.
Enjoying yourself?
Yeah. We have, you know, I just feel like it's. Got a bright future.
Yeah.
It's a good feeling.
Sit around all the good people that work.
I still got, I got our fourth. Baby girl starting next year, kindergarten, so. Yeah, I'll have four, four kids here, so.
So, what grade thing?
First, fourth, and sixth right now.
First, fourth, and sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you left fourth for a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah. Pretty fun.
How's your new house?
Great, yeah, still going great, yeah.
Where is it?
So, you know, birds, you know birds at your house, so you come up Broadstraw.
Okay.
And like, and you make that. Do you know where a bowler, Don Bowler lives?
No, but he walked me through Broadstraw.
Okay, so you come up Broadstraw, and then there's. Go on the, the kind of weave along that field, and then there's a, then there's a ninety-degree turn.
Right.
And then fall drop would be like the next. I use it pretty chill. Right at that first ninety-degree, you go straight. Yeah, this is the. So go straight, so we're, we're parallel with solid rock on that side. We're just kind of further to east, so, like, a lot of those houses. Get to that end of the hill, come around ball rock. Southern exposure. Around the first house, said drive up. Yeah, this one's like. So we're just on the. What can this noise?
Yeah, I'll have to do that, we're on ball.
Yeah, you're way on those. Formed up.
You know, just come around ball rock, you can go right off on that, start in the hole, full moon.
Oh, that rock bottom lane, yeah, so we're, we're, that actually weaves around to the bottom of our property, so we. Come down the hill, and that's like, that road actually plus the bottom.
Look at that, I made the first one.
Sixty. Yeah.
More than many.
More, way more than I need.
We, we have three hundred and twenty or.
Yeah, that's a bit more than.
More than we did.
The good thing is, I always said when we were looking, because you know, you kind of go and you're looking, you're like, wow, we could get five acres on Whitefish stage or something already. And I'm like, yeah, but it's like a farm, Katie, I'm like, I'm not a farmer. What am I gonna do with, you know, what am I gonna do with a field of weeds?
Field of weeds.
So, yeah, it'll become a field of weeds, I'm like, at least up here, I'm like, I'm like, yeah, I'll take sixteen, because it's the woods, I can just leave it the woods. And it takes care of itself.
No, you know, and then, and don't talk to my husband about that, no woods take care of themselves, we're up scanning and where's you would take these three down.
Balance. That's what we're doing.
It's like, we just watch it like five degrees colder.
When they punch us, they see it comes here, then.
Yeah.
Or it was when we got it.
Yeah. Well, and I would imagine, yeah.
Just like.
You think you could switch it on a rainy day.
Just kind of like a, and still are we like, yeah, I'm standing my way.
Yeah. Glad I wear a sweater.
That's the slew. I think our last three hours down was. I had a brand, I had like a large strategy. Spread a hundred yards that way, because I gotta create a barrier. I mean, they had those hounds. It was a lot, yeah. Yeah.
Well, we're.
Got energy.
I had a strategy, yeah.
Thunder nakes, but it's gonna.
I, I was in college, my husband and I went and visited. His grandmother in California. Our plane was delayed, I wore heels, like. Back when like those knee-high boots with heels were super trendy.
Right.
That's what I wore. Oh, never again. Never again. So that's what I wore, and I had just washed my down jacket, so I packed it in my bag, but like, it didn't dry fully.
Yeah.
So. Plane gets delayed. And then it has some cannibal issues, we missed our connecting flight, and we're watching it take off as we were landing. And then our next flight, they were able to get us on, went out at like five AM. And so we're like, we didn't get in until twelve-thirty, so like, we're not gonna go get a hotel, so I slept. On the floor. Huddled up with a little sweater in my knee-high boot. Never again, I travel in comfort from now on, like, it was the most miserable existence, the janitors vacuuming around. Yeah, it's something you can. Yeah, it's something you can survive as an early twenty-something, but.
Which in fact, I, I just say, if they wanna get me out early in the morning, I'll say, nope, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm going to an airport. And I'll get up, and I'll take a ten o'clock, twelve o'clock flight, but I'm not getting up, you know, otherwise you're three hours, even if you get to a hotel.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's what we were looking at, we were like, no, we're not gonna go pay, we had, there was one deli sandwich left, and it was. It was so loaded with horseradish sauce, it was like eating a tank of gasoline with bread, and it was. It was quite the journey, and then they lost my bag. So then I had to wear his, it, we went to fancy dinner at her assisted living at a retirement community. And you had to dress up, so you had to wear heels, you had to wear like a blazer, so I had to cram myself in his ninety-pound grandmother's. It was like, I barely fit. It was a trip for the books.
Well, you say airlines took care of you, sure.
Oh, yeah.
They do that.
Yeah.
Count on it.
I mean, they eventually delivered my bags, so that was a win.
It's like when they give you the, the dining credit. Matthews open. What do you mean, that's five dollars for a.
Yeah, we didn't get anything.
I have to tell you this story though, my, my husband flies a lot, and he flies a lot to Europe, so he's always. And so, uh. He's the top of the whatever in Delta, we were doing one of those where we were flying, I think we were flying to England, and we got to, and we were delayed here in Salt Lake. At the time, I got to Salt Lake at the same time that the flight was taking off in England, and my husband had been on the phone, maybe he has other alternatives, we were gonna fly to Seattle the next day, we were gonna fly, it was just awful. We came off the plane, this little guy was stopped, and it said, Mr. Wheeler, and he said, yes, and he said, come with me, and so we go down these stairs and put us into a car, drive us across the tarmac and put us into that flight going to eat.
Really?
We giggled for at least two. We just, I just, we were just, and the people in the plane were clapping, it was so wonderful, that will never happen to me again. Best story I have ever had.
That's how important people fly.
You know, fly a lot for business, but it was absolutely, I just don't giggle about it, it was just amazing, so that's.
That's nice.
That's the counter to yours.
That's what I aspire to. Certainly not, healed, healed boots and jackets around my head all day.
I don't think I can do that.
You guys are doing really good, you're over halfway. What we'll do, Jeff, you guys are gonna do your own tally and. Just get together and cheat it all ties out, okay?
Okay, well, so maybe start with this stack that has ballot that doesn't have anything on it, that's gonna be spoiled, so if you have a spot, either the.
One.
That didn't put any.
Is that still recording?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, hold on, that way, at least we've got a camera on.
Yep.
Okay, ready? Or. Or. Or, or, or. Or, or. Or, 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 or. Or, or, or. Or, 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 or.
Thirty, thirty.
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 Okay, ready? Again.
Okay.
Against.
One, that's one.
That's two.
Against, against. Against, against. Against, 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 against. Against, against, against.
Twenty.
Twenty.
That would be a total of fifty-one, but it's spoiled, am I right?
Correct.
Are you ready? Or, or. Or, 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 or. Or, 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 or. Or, 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 or. Or, or. Thirty?
Thirty.
Thirty. Ready? Against, against. Against, 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 against. Against. Against, 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 against. 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 Against, against.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty.
Sounds like a frick. Too easy.
Ready? Or, or. Or, or, or. Or, 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 or. Or, 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 or. Or, 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 or. Or, or.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Ready? Against, 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 against. Against, 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 against. Against. Against, 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 against. Against, against, against. Against, against. Against, against. Against, against, against.
Eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
New bundle? Or, or. Or, 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 or. Or, or. Or, or, or. Or, 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 or. Or. Or, or. Or, or. Or, or, or. Or.
Eight-five.
I had twenty-six, but I also.
Let me count.
Had a false knees, so.
Two, three, four.
Thank you. All right, ready for next ones? Against, against, against. Against, 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 against. Against, against, against. Against. Against, against. Against, 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 against. Against, against. Against, against.
Three-five.
Five, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Spatch at two hundred was too simple. How are we getting such clean endings?
You guys want to do a more bundle then?
We'd have been disappointed if you hadn't.
I have one oh seven to ninety-three, and then one rejected, so one oh seven, four, ninety-three, against, one rejected, because it was not completed.
So, how do you guys wanna do this, cause this is gonna be two hundred right here, and then this stack's gonna be two hundred, and then I have these two little stack.
Let's just do.
We cram the littles onto one, or do we wanna have the littles on their own separate page? I mean, they're like minimal.
The last one, just whatever.
Those three are probably the, um.
Okay.
Counted at the end, so they may go, they may fit in with the last two hundred, cause they were nine hundred and fifty-something, so I don't think you're gonna have.
Two hundred on the last.
Yeah.
Well, because we didn't want one hundred one, too, I mean, you did one.
Oh, we did, yeah, we did. So what's planned, and then all the rest in the last.
On the last one, okay, so just know there's, you know, just a handful on that last one, that's gonna go over that. Okay, you guys ready on this one? Or, or, or. Or, or, or. Or, or. Or, or, or. Or, 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 or. Or, 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 or. Or, or. Or, or, or. Or, or. Or, or.
Thirty-four.
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 Ready? Against. Against. Against, 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 against. Against, 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 against. Against, against, against.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
New bundle, ready? Or. Or, or. Or, or, or. Or, or. Or, or, or. Or, or, or. Or. Or, or. Or, or. Or, or. Or, 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 or.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Right, ready? Against. Against, 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 against. Against. Against, against. Against.
Twenty-nine.
Eighteen. Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay, you guys good, it's gonna switch now, there's a couple fours around here.
Oh.
But we're not starting on a new bundle. So. Yeah, same one.
On the twenty-five line.
Yeah. Or. Or. It was just those two.
Okay, so twelve, twenty-seven.
And now we're gonna switch back to, again, so, but this is same bundle. Ready?
Ready.
Against. Against. Against, against, against.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-two.
Five more to the eighteen, for target.
So that was a pocket of sixteen? Or no, fifty, sorry.
Fifty.
I'm not mathematically.
All right, everybody good on that one?
Yes.
All right, new bundle, or. Or, 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 or. Or, 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 or. Or, 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 or. Or, 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 or. Or, or.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty.
Twenty-eight.
All right, you guys ready? Against. Against, 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 against. Against, 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 against.
Twenty-two.
Two.
Twenty-two.
All right, new bundle. Or. Or, or, or. Or, or, or. Or, 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 or. four, 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 four. Yeah.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
That's it. Now we're switching. Marilyn, how does?
I have it up here. I took it off the table.
Hey, you ready?
Yeah, we're against now, right?
We're on against. So one against.
One against.
Against. Against. Against. Against. Against, 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 against. Against. Against, against. Against, against. Against, 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 against. Against, against, against. Against. Against, 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 against. Against, against, against.
Thirty-five.
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 And then you just, you guys want to put the remaining though on that last one, right? Is that what you decided?
Yes.
So we just add after thirty-five.
Oh.
Well, aren't we going to a new sheet?
We're going to know, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
One oh four to ninety-six. Four, four, ninety-six again.
Yep, nine one oh four, four ninety-six against.
What do we have?
We're cutting you out.
You know, the problem is now you create an extra. See now, like, you're too slow. Everyone's in charge of it. There are no tires on these cars. How come it's the few? Pretty sure it's you.
There are no bolts on the doors. Yeah, right.
All right, last sheet.
Yeah, about three quarters, uh, yeah, a little over three quarters, maybe eighty percent.
You guys ready? Four. Four, 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 four.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine.
Are you ready? Against. 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 Against, 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 against. 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 Against, 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 against.
Twenty-one.
All right, new bundle. Four, 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 four.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Are you ready? Against. Against, against. Against, 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 against. Against, against, against. 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 Against, against.
Twenty.
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 This is a four. South one is a four.
With that?
So on that same bundle, you got to add one more four.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
You guys all got, everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, new bundle. Four, 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 four.
Thirteen.
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 All right, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Against. Against, against. Against, against. 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 Against, 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 against. Against, against. Against, 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 against. Against. Against, against. Against, against, against. Against, against, against. Against, 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 against. Against, against.
Thirty-seven.
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 New bundle. Four, 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 four. Four. Four, 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 four.
Six.
Twenty-six.
All right, you guys ready? Against. Against. Against, 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 against. Against, against. Against, against. 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 Against, against. Against, against, against. Against, against. Against. Against, against.
Four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
All right, this is just that small stack now that we have left.
Yeah.
All right, four, 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 four.
Six, four.
Ready? Those last, last one? Against, 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 against. Against, against, yes. No monkey dollars. That's it. I guess we'll check the box.
Yeah. Yeah, perfect. Basically, next step, I've got a spreadsheet over there, too, so it'll be okay.
One oh seven, four, one fourteen against.
There you go.
That's what I got.
Where's someone go? There's always passes to look. That way you all get that sometimes.
Yes.
Operations theories that appears with the balance. You would be put, yeah, you're the speed demon out of this all. Care much about how many signatures looks. No way. Laurel's got the, Laurel's got the rock stars that can carry this whole thing.
Laurel worked for a property management company and had nine hundreds of cases of leases.
Has precision. It's interesting looking at what you guys said.
Right, right when I got married, I got to practice and practice and practice and evolve. On mine and Jeff's, I mean, based on what we read off, we come up with on the four, nine sixty-one and against nine sixty?
That's right. Yeah. That means it passes. All right, so what I need is a motion from some, uh, so, yeah, first of all, good job.
Do you guys want to double check like our math maybe off of, I mean, I know we recorded it each time?
Well, let's do that, right? So here.
Yeah, let's do it.
Here's a switch. Why is everybody caught up? And take a look at that. What can I give up or do? You have ten bundles, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. There's ten bundles. Those are your four counts. So just go ahead and look, look at the two four count. Two against, you have one spoiled. These are running turtle. You got any bundle? Like, can the table now be counted? And then this is the one against.
If you want to start, you said one bundle starts here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, read it off out loud. So four is fifty-one. No is forty-nine. Zero rejected.
Correct. Um, second one. Four is ninety-nine. No is one oh two, zero rejected. Yep, bundle three, four is one hundred. No is one hundred.
Correct.
Zero rejected.
Correct.
Four is, four votes is one-ten. No is or ninety. And zero rejected.
Correct.
Five is ninety-two, four. One oh nine, no. Zero rejected.
Correct.
Bundle six is one oh one, four, ninety-nine, no. Zero rejected.
Correct.
Here for seven?
That would be.
Bundle seven here?
Yes, that's a correctness.
So bundle seven would be yes, ninety, or four ninety, no, one oh eight. Zero rejected. Eight would be one oh seven, four. Ninety-three, no. And one rejected for the empty ballot.
Correct.
Nine would be one oh four, four. Ninety-six against. And zero rejected. And bundle ten would be one oh seven, four. One fourteen, no. Zero rejected.
Correct.
Which leads us to nine sixty-one, four, and nine sixty against.
So if everyone's happy.
One more time.
Nine sixty-one, four, four.
In favor.
In favor. And nine sixty against.
Just one.
That's all it takes. So if, so it's. It's, it's, it's fifty percent plus one. I'll get to this one by then. There are no counts. There's no ability to contest this other than taking it to court.
Okay.
At this point. So what I need from you guys is a motion to accept and certify is the wording on the, uh, of the results. A second on that, and then a vote, discussion, invoke.
And these go, that's in there taped up again?
Yeah.
Then?
Yeah, you, you guys can, you guys can actually put them in there. We'll seal them up. Then I've got, what, what we, oh, let's, let's, actually, well, before we vote on that. Here's what it's. It's sort of a lead person, so. I've got, on this one, your count was nineteen.
Twenty-two.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-one plus one spoiled. For total. So that's a difference of two.
And can we note that that spoiled ballot was blank?
Yeah.
Blank, uh, technology front. So on the recount, the results were nine sixty-one. Not sixty, right? All right, so then what I need, so I got Marilyn's first signature on that. So why, it's your name.
Can you sign it under my name?
Perfect, okay. I'll make a motion to accept and certify the recount of the technology move. A second.
Wait, are there any discussion?
So you got a lot of young motion, can we catch up with you guys? So trusty narrative. Second, okay.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of certifying at the levy election results?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. It passed unanimously.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Those, uh, discussion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
All right.